To our budget work session. So, uh. Where do you want to start?
Thank you. So I appreciate y'all taking some time today to come and let us go through our budget work session to give us some guidance at the end. So Jennifer is going to present with a couple of other folks helping her out. And then we'll have some open discussion here to just help guide us through your thought process going forward. So we'll start with estimated budget review.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If I may actually just take a moment to review the agenda. So first we will do a review, Don's going to provide us a review of fiscal year 2018 estimated fund balance. It's noted as estimated because we are awaiting a final conclusion of the fiscal year 2018 audit. So an estimate, as we approach the end of fiscal year 2019, and you all are making decisions for the adoption of our fiscal year 2020 budget, it's important for us to review available fund balance. So Don's going to present the projected fiscal year 2018, and then both he and I will review the quarterly financial report to forecast how we will potentially end fiscal year 2019. Items that we would like to spend additional time with you on today are living wage, fiscal year 2020 recommended capital plan, and information technology requests, as they are items included in a recommended fiscal year 2020 second pass budget. Just economics staff has sent information to you all in advance of today's meeting. And I believe the plan was ever going to be present, huh Vicky? Be present for any questions or discussions related to the topic. Following a living wage proposal, Matt Evans with Budget will review the recommended capital and IT requests. We'll do a quick review, kind of a recap of where we were with first pass revenues and expenditures in early April. And we'll follow with a fiscal year 2020 second pass budget scenario detailing information as to what changes we've been able to make to work towards a decrease in the variance between revenues and expenditures. And we will additionally talk about the second pass budget, noting what is in, what is included.
And in there Jennifer, we're going to build in a break to take some time for lunch right around 12:30 or so.
Great, alright, so see where we're going.
On behalf of the board.
Definitely would have been. Alright, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Don who will review our fiscal year 2018 projected.
Sure. So, as Jennifer alluded to, we haven't presented an audit to you, so we do not have a final number. However, I do not anticipate these numbers changing between now and May 7th when we actually present, because I expect them to get us our audit report today. Available fund balance is 65.2 million, which is basically your unrestricted fund balance. It's made up of committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balance. We use that number divided by total expenditures to give us available fund balance of 21.47%. So that's what you have available outside of your restricted to appropriate and use. Fund balances, policy is 15%, so that would give us an available over the 15% of about 19.6 million for 2018.
And I'll remind you that that, that is fiscal year 2018, so we still have activity and changes that take place to look at what's fiscal year 2019's in. Some of the categories for available and committed have to shift based on obligations and other areas of expenditure. So we will, we will walk through that and, and how this particular available fund balance changes once we look at fiscal year 2019's projected end.
Now we'll go on to the, this should be the third quarter. Yeah, the third quarter. So ending March 31st, we'll talk about the general fund. I don't know, I'm just following you now.
Sorry, I'm driving my chat.
You just want to skip on through, we can go. Alright. This slide here projects, shows the general fund as far as breakout by function. I don't have my glasses so I can see. Total budget for the general fund is 323.9 million. Actual expenditures as of March 31st are 215.5 million, which is about 66.5% of budget. The breakout here shows by function, which would be your general government, public safety.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Better there, but not here.
Oh no.
I, but this is.
I'm just looking for it.
As you can see, the general government had a annual budget of 45.2 million. Year-to-date actuals 29.1 million, which is about 64%. So, public safety is at about 68% of their budget. Economic and physical development is 44.5%. Human services is 68%. Culture and recreation is 67% of budget. Education's at 81.3% of their budget. And then other financing sources, which essentially is transfers to other funds, is at 25.6%. And then debt service is 28.3%. At this point in the year, you would expect us to be at about 75% of our budget, but we're 66.5% and that's just due to the timing of payments, transfers, debt service, that sort of thing. As we progress through the end of the year, we will get a lot closer to where we anticipate to be with budget. The next slide should break it out by category, which shows you salary benefits, operating, program support, contingency, and capital. And it's, the only difference here is we're splitting it out so you can see the actual categories and how we're breaking them out. Salaries and benefits makes up the majority of our expenditures and it is at 70.8% of budget. And then this is solid waste, which is our major fund as far as our enterprise. It's broken out by category. We didn't show it by function, as I told you at the last one, it only has basically one function, which is an enterprise. So expenditures to date are at 4.4 million. Total budget is 9.8 million. We are at 45.1% of budget. This is driven a lot by usage, so we will have more expenditures as we get closer to the end of the year, as we take into account the closure, post-closure. Appreciate that. Do you have, is there any questions on these funds at all?
Say that again?
I'm good.
You're good? In the quarterly report that you all received, there's obviously more detail and more information. And if you have any questions about that, as you go through it and review it, just let me know. I'll turn it over to Jennifer, she's going to talk about the projections piece.
So just a reminder that projections are based on actuals through March 31st. Overall revenues and expenditures are projected to remain within the current budget. Our total projected revenues are 315,438,438. For each revenue by type, we anticipate to receive all or more than budgeted, with the exception of internal, our internal transfer revenue, which I'll speak about for reasons as to why. The ad valorem is projected at just slightly over the 100%. A lot of that has to do with our receipt of prior year revenues, prior year property tax revenues. Sales tax is projected at 103% based on current trends. Permits and fees, as well as sales and services, are projected to receive more than their current budget. And this is related to upward trends for permitting volume, as well as detention center revenue for federal inmates, and some rental income. And those percentages are 117 and 225%. So we'll talk, I'll give you some more information. To review in more detail the categories of other taxes and licenses, and the combination category that includes miscellaneous revenue and interest, we need to outline some of the key contributors to why those budgets aren't that much percent over 100%.
Can we get back to the previous slide for just one second?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly. So the budget that we forecasted we would bring in 315 million in revenue, but we now believe we're going to bring in 323 million?
No, we, so our amended budget, so the amended revenue budget is 323 million, and we're projected to bring in 315 million.
So we're going to bring in 8 million less.
Than the amended budget, yes. So if you'll remember, when we started out with the adopted budget, we had about an 8.7 or 8.8 million dollar appropriation. As activity occurs throughout the fiscal year, the appropriation of the fund balance increases. And so, and so simultaneously, your, your revenue and your expenditure budgets also increase. And so at amended, we're at just over 12 million of appropriated fund balance. So the variance between revenues and expenditures is about 12 million. So this is revenues that we anticipate to receive under the amended budget, but that amended budget takes into account appropriated fund balance. Does that help?
It does.
Okay.
That's why I went into marketing. But yeah, I get it.
Alright, great. So let me just give a little piece on the inter-fund transfers. So they, they are projected to be at 86% of the budget. As the budget plan included a planned transfer from the insurance fund, so in fiscal year 2019, one of the means to balance the budget was a 1.5 million dollar anticipated transfer. In the projection, we are not including that. We are indicating that we most likely will not need that transfer. So you'll see that the anticipated revenue is down because we're not planning to receive that transfer into the general fund. So, wanted to outline some key contributors to the percent increase in the revenues. And a lot of this has to do with one-time revenues. You can see the one-time settlement recovery dollars of 750,000 from the green settlement, 189,000 for crating settlement, 171,241 dollars for stone settlement. Additionally, see that there's a one-time excise tax revenue as a result of the sale of Memorial Mission Hospital. It's recorded and contributes to the increased percent in other taxes and licenses. It's important to note that while the revenue is recorded at the full 1.26 million, the county share is approximately 646.32. So we booked the revenue, but we have to turn around and send approximately 49% of that to the state. So we get to keep approximately 51%. Health and human services is projected to receive additional revenue over budget due to a shift in reimbursement that is more heavily weighted to our uncapped revenue, uncapped revenue sources, revenue streams. And this fluctuates depending on a multitude of factors, however the trend is indicating we should receive additional revenue. So we do a budget plan, we've got uncapped and capped and uncapped revenue sources, but depending on the number of vacancies that you may have in a child welfare area where there's a lot of capped revenue streams, it shifts your allocation heavier to Medicaid where we have uncapped revenue streams. So that distribution changes because we do a budget based on point in time, if that makes sense.
Can you back up to the interest in investment earnings?
Yeah, I'm actually, there's a slide, the next slide I'm going to, I'm going to give you that information. And so just briefly, other revenue projections across departments had some incremental increases and decreases, which makes the net projected increase of 293.36. So giving you a little more detail on interest earnings. It's 1.2 million additional dollars over our last projection. The projected monthly interest income more than doubles from December to March. You're able to see here the trend we would have been developing our projections from. This new trend swings our projection to 1.2 million more than we previously projected. This is thanks to improved market rates. And it also has to do with the dollars that are currently in your, your account. So how much money is in the account that's earning interest? Now that, a lot of that has to, it fluctuates throughout the year depending on the counting cash flow, so when we receive and have to pay.
Just going back to the previous slide, is the insurance settlement money reflected in here as well?
So the insurance settlement money, so the, the decision back in September or October, that revenue actually got posted back to the insurance fund. There's a correlation between where the money was originally paid versus where it goes back to. So that particular revenue.
2.3.
Posted to the insurance fund.
Okay.
And then, and then there was the subsequent transfer of a portion.
So that would show up.
To the general fund.
Wasn't it transferred so that we could give them still 1.7 million?
The money, the money was transferred via a budget amendment in the amount of like 1.863.
But 2.3, the settlement I think was around 2.3 and that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that went right to the insurance fund.
Okay, they did. Any other questions? Great. So what, so the amount of revenue that contributes to the improved financial outlook since our last financial report totals 4.5 million dollars and is largely one-time revenues, as we outlined. What you still don't see here are any revenues for the potential sale of Ferry Road. Without the ability to confidently plan on the receipt of the revenues in 19, we've not included them in this projection. If the closing were to take place in fiscal year 2019, the dollars would post as revenue and would become part of fund balance at the conclusion of the fiscal year, as well as the other one-time revenues mentioned previously.
So I heard yesterday that there was a potential of closing that in June.
June 20th is what we're aiming for.
And so if we do that, then that would be in this year, correct?
That's correct.
So are we aiming with a very heavy hand?
Trying. I did check with our real estate person, James Wilson with Poynt Properties, he's heard no rumors that they're trying to shop that at all. So just based on experience, it's not uncommon since they're talking about handing money over to keep that money in hand as long as they can, wait till the last second close, which would be June 20th.
Well, those are on our budget on June 18th.
We, we'll talk about that.
Here's a, I am going to cover a little bit about a scenario around the, the potential of for Ferry Road revenue. So moving on to the general fund expenditures that are projected for fiscal year 2019 year end, that is 315,650,573. Spending across all functions is estimated to remain within budget and at 97.5% spent for the total fund. Debt service and education funding are expected to be fully expensed. Those are pretty finite payments guaranteed, just about all to be paid out. Since our last projected, projection, we've projected to spend approximately 1.7 million less than previously projected due to an overestimate of leave sales. At the close of December and during our work on the projection, we unfortunately didn't have the submitted request to be able to evaluate the impact for the last available cycle of leave sales. And we overestimated the actual impact. So in working with departments, we've also identified additional dollars that are not planned for spending in areas of operating and program support. It's not unlikely that we see more conservatism in an earlier projection than one in, one that is nearer to the end of the fiscal year. The confidence in which we can project increases as the number of months that you can see an actual spending has taken place.
So that's, that's good news.
It is good news. Every few slides, Brownie's like, wait, could they have done?
Updating that. So I'm just curious if, so while that's financially good news, you know, when we talked about the annual leave policy four or five months ago with George and looked at some different policy changes about either going to one week or even getting, getting rid of it, do we know if any of the, and there were some different forecasts of what we would say based on different, you know, possible policy changes? Do we know if any of those forecasts maybe weren't correct based on, you know, identifying this? Because, you know, it's, it's an issue I'm still interested in, and I've kind of still got those kind of numbers in my head, but do we still feel pretty good about those? If you go to here, it's this, if you go to here, it's this, or do we need to update any of that?
So we definitely can update that. What I will tell you is, is that for the current fiscal year, no realized savings. I think, I think with, with the upcoming news, we definitely saw a spike in the annual leave sales, which I think was to be expected. I think for fiscal year 20, we have worked on not having historicals to look at on what that potentially looks like. We have looked at a potential forecast that I would tell you is a savings over the current fiscal year and a couple prior fiscal years. So to the extent of that, we can look at it, you know, more closely and, and get that information back out to you. I would anticipate it to be a savings. Right. So just to, just to kind of give us a summary, as a result of the revenue and expenditure notations from the previous slides, the projected use of fund balance at this current time is 212,135. So you can see we were just about at an, at the equal projected revenues and projected expenditures.
Well done.
And subject, subject to change, but we absolutely will continue to, to report out as we continue to monitor.
But this is not counting, still waiting on the schools and everybody coming on this stuff, right?
And this is your current fiscal year? So for fiscal year 20, absolutely, they're due to, due to provide information to you on May 7th.
But they're going to spend everything we appropriate for them.
But we don't get anything back from them.
Their spending will be like exactly what was.
Yeah, we're, we're, we have already programmed that we would send everything that you budgeted to them. This is just getting you a snapshot of where we expect to be at June 30 before we go into looking at July into next year. This is just getting you to where we are today.
Good job.
So this is the outlook of where we hope to end fiscal year 19. And so before we move on to the next, you know, the next topics on our agenda, are there any other items on the, on the projections that you have questions on?
I just always appreciate hearing y'all sort of, I guess editorialize a bit. Last year as we went through the budget cycle, I think some new approaches were tried, things like the contingency fund. And just any, if y'all feel prepared to share any kind of lessons learned at this point in the game as we, as we're, as we're thinking ahead, or if not today, I'd love to hear that later.
I'll, I'll speak to the projection process. I think I mentioned this when we, when we gave our, our very initial financial report. It's a, it's a new, not necessarily, it is new methodology. It's, it's new. So I'm anxious to get through the end of this fiscal year, let's look to see how we truly compare to how we're projecting, and then take that information as an opportunity to see how that can inform our next budget planning cycle. So that, that's one piece for me. I don't know if there's anything in particular from Don.
For me, I basically take what we do and just report back. I don't, I don't play with the numbers. They are what they are.
That's, that's why we're.
Getting those numbers out of our system presents different challenges, but we have created a bunch of reports that we're able to do that now.
Is this the work day?
Yeah.
And is that, do you think that's sort of the, being the first year of amplification with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Not knowing what reports they had and then customizing reports so that we can get the information in a format without having to create team reports and putting it into a spreadsheet. So we've gotten to that point, which is also going to help us a lot when we move to the next audit cycle.
Yeah.
In the next month.
Finish marathon, start anew.
So, and just, so I'm clear, so we were forecasting 6.5 million dollars of fund balance expended, we think we're going to land around 212,000 dollars expended.
Yes, yes, usage, so yes.
This would be 212, our fund balance would be 212,000 dollars less than what we started this year.
Your available fund balance, yes.
So a question for Agol. So you know, just, I'm just curious, you know, this is the only county any of us have ever, you know, worked on. So, you know, we have this pattern of, you know, we always forecast we're going to use fund balance, right? And it's usually a pretty big, a pretty big number, you know, five, 10 million dollars, it's not uncommon. And then, you know, over all these years, we almost always end up spending very little of it. And it's, which is good, like we're all happy to be hearing this news that once again, that has happened, yay. But it's also kind of, kind of perplexing from a budget planning standpoint, right? Because it's kind of like every time we forecast it, it's like, well, we know that we're not really going to spend it, but we have to take the fact that it's forecasted that we are seriously, right? We have to believe that that's actually kind of. So I don't know, just from your perspective, working in other cities and counties, is that, is that dynamic of forecasting use of fund balance, but then oftentimes utilizing a lot less of it? Is that really normal or common? Are we different a little bit in terms of that pattern?
So the difference for me is that we use fund balance here to fund operations in our budget process, and then you don't use it because we get to manage operations to make sure that we don't do that. So what, what I'm telling the staff to do next year, Jennifer spoke to this, we really don't have a historical to look at because we weren't sure what was going on prior to last year. Last year was really the first look, that you did a really true budget process. So for next year for us, we need to look and see what is truly the spend rate. We have a look to that before. When you look at each department and see what it is that they're really spending, or they have capacity to spend, they might think they can get it done, but they really can't get it done in this 12-month period. So we need to look and see what is their capacity to get it done, and then align that with what our true ask needs to be. So I think this 20 that you'll see is going to be another of the same, where you have a huge allocation of fund balance. But our goal is to have fund balance, which is a one-time revenue, to pay for one-time expenses. That should be paying for your capital and your one-time projects, not for operations. So for next year, 20 and 21, our, our job is to align that budget better, so you wouldn't have these big swings in fund balance at the end of the year. And you'll see that again this year because we don't have that history built to see truly what the spend rate is.
And do you think over, let's say over the next couple of budget cycles, we might get into more of a dynamic where when we forecast fund balance usage, if we are in a particular budget cycle, that it'll be, you know, kind of much more dialed in, like the deviation from forecasted to actual will end up being a lot narrower than what we've sort of traditionally seen?
That's our goal. The only difference that you wouldn't, we can't control is what our economy's going to grow. And you guys are growing tremendously. We have a program of 6% and I think that may be a little low on our fund, on our sales stats, because we are seeing more and more growth in our economy. That's the only part that we can't really dial in on is what that natural growth is going to look like.
Perfect.
Yes.
I'm excited to have those conversations and in doing so, would love to revisit a topic we began talking about with Tim Flora about 18 months ago, which is we sort of looked at the top 10 counties and how they approach fund balance. And, and I don't remember the rankings, but I remember Bunkham was.
We were, we were, we were actually, no, we were really low. We were really low compared to Mecklenburg and Wake and the other counties. We were keeping very little.
And it started, I think, sort of an interesting, partly philosophical, but partly very practical question, process of saying, how should we be thinking about where, sort of how we're managing fund balance? So I'd like to revisit that piece of it in addition to sort of looking at specifically allocating towards one-time costs and, and try to dial in. I think the conversation just kind of got lost as, as other things came up.
And I think it's not how much to use, because I know Mecklenburg fund balances is in 100 million, so they have a lot to use. It's the philosophy and the policy choices that we make around fund balance.
Yeah, and that's where we kind of had, we got like one step into that conversation, I think, and I'd love to revisit it.
Yeah, but even like as just as a percentage, we were keeping a lot lower percentage than these bigger counties.
Oh yes.
It made me wonder if we were like studying apples to apples, because like, why would we, why are these other counties keeping so much, like what seemed like such a huge amount of money? There must be something going on that we're not.
So Don will tell you, when I asked what our fund balance was, he told me 15%. He said, why so low? That was my reaction when I first heard we have 15% fund balance. And so I want to look at it also from a AAA, because I want to make sure that we are in the same league. When we're talking about double AAA counties, what is they're looking at as a percent? I truly think 15% is extremely well per county your size to. I truly think 15% is extremely well for county your size to keep fund balance. So, that's on our list as well to look, so I'm glad you brought that up. So, that's, Don and I talked about that. He also thought it was rather well, and he got here as well.
Well, that's helpful to hear you both have had that assessment initially.
But is that dollar amount, though? I mean, as we grow on the, on the top line, you know, your percentage is here, then that, that...
You need to look at it as a percentage, because basically, it's how long that we fund operations and everything stops.
Right.
So, you can't just say, you know, have a target dollar. No, we need to have a target percentage of what's realistic and what makes us, Avril and I, feel better.
At night, we can sleep on that. We don't have to stress it out. But we would, we would look at that options and bring that map to you because that's the conversation we need to have as far as what is our fund balance policy? Do we need to arrange, or do we need to floor, do we need to see, then what does that look like? So, we've talked about that as something that we want to bring forward in the spring after we get through our budget process and get through our audit. We will love to look at fund balance, so we'll take a look at what other counties are doing, and also, not just any county, but the triple, double AAA that we want to make sure that when a rating agency look at us, they come here across the state of North Carolina that we are in that market as well.
So, do the other counties also have their, their school system, do they also have a big fund balance?
We can look at that. Typically, school systems, we try to draw that fund balance down because if they have an issue, they come to us for funding. So, do they need to keep, because think about it, the fund balance that counties, school systems keep is all our local money. That's local money that we've paid in, so if they're going to keep that, then they need to be able to use that for their emergencies, and not always to us to pay for everything. So, that's a policy conversation that we'll also find out when we look at the other counties, what they're doing.
From the, from the, from the work session, we get, we obviously have talked about that when it comes to us, from the work session I went to last week, it sounded like they're really using it this year, and it's going to be much lower than what we've seen in the past, so.
So, but as we look at, you know, ob- obviously, you don't want to keep, you don't want to keep too much of taxpayers' money. There's a lot of, this is a big, this is a big conversation, you know, and a, and a, and a difficult one, one to balance. And so, we call upon the experts, which are you guys, to be able, be able to do that. And so, when we, when we talk about, you know, schools have a fund balance, we have a fund balance, but ultimately, we're, the county, we're responsible for that.
We make fund balance, yes.
So, if we're carrying both at the same time, you know, does that make sense? And it's been extremely politicized. It's just, I mean, you talk about the school system budget, you know, and all of a sudden, you know, you, you hate education, you know, which is foolishness because we, no one on this board feels that way, and we all, we all want support. So, I'm encouraged that you're challenging all of those numbers, and that we're going to look at that, you know, as a whole, and, and we, we need to be able to do that. And I've been one, after the first year, first year, I didn't have a clue what the, what fund balance was and how it was figured, probably because I was not getting a very good explanation now that I look back. But since then, I've always, it's always concerned me that that be the right amount, and you're, we're not carrying too much. And those are big numbers. You look at, what was it, $19 million, over 15%? And when you look at the difference between that and being at 21, that's a lot of money. And when the policy is at 15, you know, we, I mean, you have, you have to look at that. It has to be a good number.
But you're looking at that two years when you look at that 19.
I am, I am.
All right.
Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not hanging on to that. I'm just trying to talk through this, you know, and understand it even more. But that's kind of, that's kind of where we've been at. And we get hit with that all the time, you know, the, the fund balance, so it's good to have this conversation out there for everybody.
I think the key is, the key is, we've got to show the taxpayers that we are being transparent and managing the funds the way they should. Now, what we need to not realize, a lot of people I talk to, what's unfortunate, I hate to put it this way, but a lot don't understand when we're talking about almost a, what $400 million budget. It's not like a $100,000 budget managing a home or something like that. But the key, I think, for us is, we've got to be transparent in how we handle fund balance, how we handle everything, to show the taxpayers that we are doing the right thing. What we've been doing in the past is operating in secrecy in so many ways. And let's face it, we're being honest and above board. We are shuffling funds where they shouldn't go either. But I think that's what we need to do, and this is what's good, that we're having these discussions, because we need to have them to do the right thing. But we need to continue to be above board and transparent, folks. And, you know, sometimes when you look at fund balance and all, sure, we've got to be managing properly, but remember, though, when you've got a budget the size of ours, a 15% deal, you have one school burned down. Look where you'd be, you know, you've got to think about that. You know, everybody's looking, saying, "No," but you don't know that. You know, we've got to look at that. We've got to prepare for these assets, too, to do it right.
And beyond that, one thing we'll look at to help guide our fund balances is our cash flow. We get majority run in two weeks in December, a week in January, but we have to fund it for the rest of the year prior to that. So, cash flow and how we manage that and money management is huge. So, that's a conversation that we'll have at a, a spring conversation, so we'll have a plan for next year.
And we'll have an opportunity a little later also to talk through some more fund balance conversations, so. Moving on to living wage, as you may recall or be aware, on September 4th, 2012, the Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution wanting to ensure its employees earn a living wage and indicating that it should be revisited each year during the annual budget process to ensure it remains consistent with implementation. As part of the fiscal year 2020 budget planning process and in alignment with the desires of this board, we are bringing to you today a recommendation from the county manager. In keeping with the intent of the current resolution language as to what employees the resolution applies to, the proposal from the county manager is for all full and part-time employees to be paid a minimum of $15 per hour. These are employees that depend on unemployment in their position as a primary source of needs to meet their needs. This additionally aligns with state-proposed minimums in conjunction with some of other jurisdictions in North Carolina. The dollar amount in the resolution established in 2012 was $11.35 per hour for an employee with benefits and $9.85 per hour without health insurance. I've got that reversed on, 11.35 and 9.85. In recent planning, the fiscal year 2019 adopted budget followed the September 4th, 2012 resolution to ensure all regular employees were paid at the rate established in the resolution. Additionally, salary adjustments for library pages and substitutes, which are temporary positions, were adjusted to $11 and $13 per hour to assure that we were competitive in the broader employment market. On November 20th, a new personnel position classification and pay plan for Buncombe County was adopted following the completion of a study conducted by Evergreen Solutions. On January 2nd, a budget amendment was approved for increasing the salaries of 92 employees in positions that were identified by the Evergreen Solutions study to be lower than market rates. While the January 2nd salary adjustment was not specific to addressing living wage, it is an initial step in working towards addressing pay and compensation needs and inequities, as well as identifying and implementing a living wage for employees. I will talk later about our request, and the fiscal year 2020 second pass budget can provide the financial support to begin addressing various organizational pay and compensation needs, as was identified in the requests from departments during the process. This same budget request would be used to address the 15 employees in the county manager's proposal at a total dollar amount of $27,393.
So, and Just Economics is here as well, but this is a small amount to get people to know and people where they need to be. And if we're truly going to talk about living wage and being a leader, I wanted to make sure we address those, those 15 employees. We have temporary employees also working for us, but they are true temps, they're in and out. Their salary is the wage that we pick for temporaries. These are the folks that are coming to work each and every day, dependent on this job to be their livelihood. So, I wanted to make sure that we address those in this budget at $27,393 is, is what that ask is for this year.
And so, we would propose to bring you an updated resolution based on today's discussion, and certainly will. That concludes the information for me. If you all have any questions.
Or you want to hear from, to hear anyone on the living wage conversation?
Maybe just one question, I'd love to hear from Vicky. The, so the, the salary adjustments that we made, when was that, January? Yeah, a few months ago. Did a lot of that increased funding affect positions that, like, would the, would the number be a lot bigger than 27,000 if we hadn't made those previous changes? So, that went a long way towards getting there, and then here's what's, wasn't covered by that? Because we didn't have a specific $15 policy at the time.
What are these, basically, these jobs?
So, these are across several departments. Libraries was the largest, largest portion, EMS, sheriff, and one in solid waste.
Vicky, do you have any thoughts you'd like to share with us?
I just want to, first of all, thank the staff and the commissioners for entertaining this, of this policy, and also let you know that Just Economics' current wage rate is 1365 for employers that are voluntarily choosing to pay a living wage. And, and we'd like to see the county be a leader, and, and we really, really appreciate you all taking, taking this issue on and moving to the level potentially where you're, where you're a leader. It's becoming increasingly difficult for employees to live in this county, and we think that, that it's important that employees that work for the county are able to live in this county and put a roof over their head and food on their table without relying on help. If you made this move to $15 an hour, you would be in line with other top counties in the state, including Durham County. That has also moved to this level. And we'd also recommend that you put into a policy continual adjustment or measures for adjustment as you move forward so that, that the value of $15 an hour doesn't, doesn't lose, lose something over time as costs have gone up. Again, we really appreciate working with, with the staff on this and, and bringing this toward to you today.
Thank you.
So, the only concern, and I don't have a problem with this right here, but the only concern that I have is, you know, if I was sitting there and it's taken me a long time to get to $15 an hour, and then somebody gets, you know, $15 an hour, I wouldn't want to hold them from doing that. How do you, how do you deal with the inequity of that? How do you deal, how do you, and I'm, I want to just give my opinion, is that I think that there's a lot of accountability within a corporation or a department or a business, that their first obligation is to their team members all the time, 100% of the time, or you'll be a very lonely leader, and you, you won't be able to provide whatever it is you're distributing. That's the bottom line. You can make tweaks in product, you can make changes in all of that, but you, you, and even when you go on a difficult time, I can't remember the CEO that wrote it, but this person said that even when you go on the difficult times, it picks the people you want to come out with, and, you know, no matter where they're at, you gotta, you gotta pay them, you gotta keep them. So, I, you know, I'm really interested in making sure that whatever we're paying is very fair. If that's fair, that's what we should be paying. But I want to make sure it's fair to everybody. I don't have an answer for that.
So, we'll talk about that a little bit. We have another slide later about the inequities that you talked about, how to be, if somebody's been sitting here for 15 years and they've just gotten to 15, and I'm bringing people to 15. So, we'll talk about that as well because we do, we are working with staff on the philosophy of how to work on those inequities. One thing that we've noticed with the Evergreen study, they have really brought up to our attention is a lot of inequities across both of the counties. Some departments were treated really well, and some were not. So, staff has brought that up, and that has really bubbled up to the top. And what we're working on with staff, and staff is in part, and you're going to speak to this in another slide as well, so I'm not going to take this time to talk about it now, but we have talked about what it is you just brought to the table, how do we work on those inequities and how do we address county-wide and not have inequities and unfairness across the county, which exists today, right now, that we have a lot of those issues today. And it's going to take us time to fix it all, but we do want to make a start at it this year.
Okay. I have one other question, so.
That was a short soapbox for me, wasn't it?
It's, it's okay. It's a good question, it's a very good question.
Thank you.
The, so, we do have a living wage policy, you know, if we're going to go down this path, you know, we're really effectively kind of updating and saying, this was a good policy, but we really feel like, you know, we need to, you know, go to 15 and so...
So, if we're going to bring a resolution to you, did you actually do that and then it came about?
Okay, so we'll actually update our personnel policy to reflect this $15.
The living wage resolution, yes, sir.
You know, and I'll say this, I told Noah we'd get off that soapbox.
I thought it was too short for you.
It is, it is a little short. I have a little bit, you know, I don't want us to get too hung up with, 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 with terms either. I appreciate where we're at today, this called living wage and so on and so forth, but, you know, we should have a fairness policy within Buncombe County that drives all of this, and it should be cultural, and that's, that's the challenge with leadership, is that as the culture moves through, everything changes, everybody, everybody's treated fairly, doesn't matter where, where you land, we're going to, we're going to compare that position with these positions and make sure that it's fair, and it's not going to be driven by national policy, it's not going to be driven by buzzwords, you know, that it's a, it's a, very no reflection on, you know, those that, you know, work on that and try to, you know, do the math on that, but.
You're preaching to the choir, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Take it, and offer to move on.
Thank you for that. I agree with you 100%.
Off your soapbox, Joe.
I'm off, man.
We'll get another one from him.
So, I am going to turn it over to Matt Evans, who is going to review the recommended projects for capital improvement plan and information technologies. If you'll remember, we began a process that we kicked off in October where we gathered information from departments around what their capital and IT needs were, went through a process and communication with those requesters. There was a capital projects review team made up of several areas who evaluated those, started with NRM County Manager George Wood, followed it up with conversations with, with Avril, and have arrived at what is the recommended projects for fiscal year 2020. And Matt's going to lead you guys with it.
Jeremy Commissioners, first off, thanks for letting us do this. Obviously, the budget's always a fun time for us all. As Jen did say, we, we start the second quarter of the fiscal year preceding the budget with discussions with departments around inventorying all the needs, a lot of it with thought in mind to kind of maintain the current things we have, not a lot of things that are new, per se, always, but with the capital needs outside of the IT stuff, you're going to, we're going to try to debt finance what we can, we're going to try to pay go what we can. So, it's kind of that massage there, cash flow. I wanted to point out a couple of big items out of this 7.5, 7.6 million dollar identified at this point in time as debt projects. The biggest one is the 1.6 million dollar recurring fleet for the sheriff. If you can recall in the past, we've kind of went backwards with this, where we would have a target number in mind, we would say $600,000. Some, a sliver of it would go to the general government, a sliver of it would go to the sheriff. We had staff work on some analysis that put together a point system using age, price over repair, repairs over price, and then mileage. And using that point system, we arrived at the 1.65, $1 million, which I think replaces around 48 vehicles, patrol vehicles and one-attention van. And then the other item on there, please stop at any point in time, is the Garen Creek Tower, which you all have seen on this plan probably many years. It, it's one that keeps getting shuffled down, but obviously, we're going to get to the point where we can't keep shuffling it down anymore because this is a needs assessment in itself in the capital plan. So, we previously had $600,000 plugged in there in the last few years, but talking with IT and just the way that it's been going, it was, it was labeled as a Garen Creek Tower retrofit, but... But it's coming in the light maybe that we're going to actually need a new tower. So there is a radio assessment needs committee, I think they're called the Public Safety Radio Committee, which is Jerry at this, at this point in time, the sheriff, some sheriff folks, and then our IT folks. So two projects, this Garen Creek Tower retrofit and FY20, and then there was a VHF project. And this all goes with dispatching, public safety, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They've prioritized this Garen Creek Tower as, hey, we have a public safety need out in this patch of land. What are we going to do about it? So the million dollars reflects potential acquisition of land for us to put a tower on. There were talks at some point of maybe, hey, I know someone that has some land, we could put some tower, a tower on. So just keep that in mind, the 1 million dollars is a placeholder. It's essentially, it just boils down to there's a public safety concern out there, so.
Where did the 1.6 come from for?
The 1.6 is based on a point system. I think it's just the, the replacement cost for the vehicles, which is 40, John used 50, I think with upfitting.
40,000.
40,000 and then take another 10,000 dollars.
Is that what was requested when the sheriff came to meet with us?
The sheriff?
We actually had a higher requirement.
More than 48?
Yes.
Yes, but we did find when we did our own assessment that there was a heavy need. And we currently have it in the CIP plugged in at 1.6 million dollars going forward for the next five years.
Who decided that there's a heavy need?
Yeah.
Health assessment, what's the assessment?
Staff did.
Staff did, yes.
What staff?
Fleet staff along with our budget staff and my office and the sheriff's office and performance management. So what we did is.
Fleet staff, they've been taking care of these vehicles for years.
Absolutely agree, and we have been patching these vehicles for years still as well, certainly.
But we haven't, we haven't stepped up this hard in any way, shape or form. We have people now that are making decisions in, in these areas that it goes back to performance management. You can draw a line, but they're not car builders, they're not, they don't do this, they don't. Who you talk to is the people that fix these cars and keep them on the road.
Yes.
And make sure that they're safe, that's who you talk to.
Absolutely.
It's my understanding that these recommendations come from folks working on the cars and then also that Bunkham's frankly have been driving cars a lot longer than many other counties and far past sort of the lifespan of what would be considered safe for sheriff's deputies. So that's my understanding of sort of how we arrived at initially the sheriff's office and then the county kind of went in and vetted and drew a little deeper on the numbers.
Done pretty good all these years.
So I think that's why.
I see state cars, it's got more miles on them than our cars do. So I guess the state screens up more than we do.
But largely there's only one component of what we looked at, we looked at repair cost as well and maintenance cost. So we do a good job with fixing, but we spend money to fix that.
Yeah.
So we looked at the payback, what it would take to fix that car versus buy it brand new. And we actually went through this pretty rigorous data collection of these, of these vehicles. Pardon?
Whoopie.
Okay. But that's what we did and that's what we're working on.
That's why I said we got too many, we got too many things in the picture now.
Okay, so let me.
We got too many, we got too many programs playing the game in the program that's going to cost the taxpayers money. It's not our money. This is the taxpayers' money.
Agreed.
And, you know, looking at that many vehicles, we've got a nice fleet of cars. I've looked at, you know, and I actually go down there and see what we have and see what we're getting rid of. Because I am dealer and sometimes I want to bid on it. But when you take the whole package and you do it the way we're doing it, you know, for 25 years, they have taken care of a project and it's worked. Vehicles have been taken, maintained. If they're bad, Rick then, Rod, he'll say, it needs to be good and we need to get rid of it, point blank. But right now, I'm not at the point that I'll even support 1.65 million for some more new cars. Because we just bought a bunch of cars last year, 10 or 12 new ones. And put in the fleet and that, that was part of the money from the gun range. We got these new ambulances, 1.8 million plus 10 new patrol cars for the sheriff's department. How many vehicles do we need?
These are not new, these are replacements, so Neil, but we will go back and double check with Rick and make sure that we are all on the same page. But we, we've done that work and this is our recommendation, but as you know, the.
The recommendation is basically coming from the Ford Ford. And I know that and other people know that too. So I'm not, I'm not coming from where.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
For the safety, for the safety of the people.
Would it be helpful for us?
Safety of the sheriffs and why, why are we spending money on stuff that we don't need to at the time?
I think it may be helpful for us to understand the point system and how that was determined. So that we, we can understand where you came from. At the end of the day, this is about the safety of those driving our patrol cars.
Do you want us to share that point system today or you want us?
I have, I, it does not matter to me if I see it today or tomorrow. But as we move forward in this process, having an idea of how that came about would be helpful. Is this also one of those areas that you mentioned that may have experienced some inequities over the years? And this is a way to, to address some of those inequities?
I think they were definitely underfunded. You know, we always thought about, we, we thought about this last, we're going to say, you know, we all know who was here before. We know how the budget was ran, we had a plug number, that's what it was, do what you need. It doesn't need to be a lead with money, it needs to be a lead with need. Pulling the data out, I will say it wasn't a vacuum, so they did work with the folks at the county garage and other, other, other folks. There's a really good report that they put together that perhaps we could share. It does have the three factors of the point system in there, it has a breakdown of all the different vehicles in there, et cetera, et cetera.
Let me ask you a question. We're not talking about new vehicles, we're talking about replacement.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
That's new vehicles and replacement.
What do you mean we're not? Well, it's, it's new vehicles and not adding.
We're not adding any vehicles.
Additional vehicles.
We're just replacing vehicles we have.
So, so I'll, I'll kind of go along the lines of Amanda's point. This is not a, since we've got a lot of conversation about this, it's not a bad one to have a slide or have something later that you can pull out, explain to us how it happened, you know, make sure that, you know, and, and what you just said is that the way it's been done in the past doesn't need to be the way it's done in the future. Doesn't mean we're always going to, you know, all of a sudden we got a new sheriff and now we're spending 1.6 million. I don't, I don't, I don't, we don't ever want to do it that way. And so we don't ever want to perceive to be doing that way. And so if we've got a good slide and good information, maybe we can give more detail on that and it might be, might be helpful. Doesn't mean, you know, if we're on a certain position, we're going to move, but wouldn't hurt to have, you know, a lot, you know, more, a lot more information on that.
Yeah.
That's, that's a lot of money.
It is, and right now we're just looking at this one data point in terms of the cost of replacing vehicles, but we're not looking at the maintenance costs, we're not looking at if we choose to set, if, you know, if we choose to run vehicles into the ground, they have no value left. But if they're, you know, if they're, you know, different choices about how often we replace them affect the maintenance, affect the resale value, which helps us provide money to buy new vehicles. So we need to look at all that, obviously with an eye towards what's the most, you know, what's the most, you know, financially intelligent approach for us to take while keeping safe, you know, obviously safe vehicles out there. So I think that's what we're all interested in, so I'd love to, I think we'd all love to see the thought that's been put into.
We'll go through that because we also looked at different categories. If it's a patrol vehicle versus a civilian or we wanted to make sure that we treated them differently. So we'll, we'll make sure we get that detail for you and send that out. And Jim just mentioned that we can pull that up over lunchtime, we can find the slides and put it up on the slide, so we'll try to do that.
I will say one more thing, I mean, this is a pride to take in, from the staff level from where I am, we're a ba, a very data-rich organization and we leverage our data very well, I'd like to think so. And with this particular policy, it wasn't bad that we had before, it was just data that needed to be revised. And this was the opportunity for us to do that when the sheriff comes and asks, we go, well, what do we need? And I'll, I'll be honest, well, I'll go in naive and say they don't need that. And then you actually look at the data and you're like, oh wow, they actually do need, there is a need there, so I'll close on that one. But the rest of the stuff on the debt projects is just kind of keeping up, just, just keeping up with everything. Interchange building has a lot of window repairs, some exterior painting. The theme going down here is you're going to be seeing window repairs, which are very expensive. I didn't know that until this. And then painting jobs and we've got some parking lot stuff in there where we have a plethora of parking lots that need to be repaved and lined. If there's anyone in particular you guys see you want to talk about, I certainly can.
And I'd just like to see that you, that we're investing some more money in our parks and making them safer and, you know, more appealing to folks to come out and use them.
Yes, sir. And more will pop up on this next slide too, on this Pago project. So the biggest item on this Pago project is the facility assessment. We, we determined there's a need, obviously we have a lot of management changes, it's a perfect time to do this as well. But the $900,000 you see there for the facility assessment for the county-owned buildings, Mr. Wood is very in favor of this, Avril's very in favor of this. You know, we see it work with AB Tech, right? So like we, capital plan maintenance, we set them forth, we see, we see it working. However, on our end, I think we have like 2 million square feet of building at this point after the human services complex. It's really time to go in there and get us on a plan. So $900,000 was the quote, it was, there was a low and high end per square foot. If you take our square footage and multiply by the quote we got from the architects, that's what that comes out to. So that's not a, too bad of a plug number there.
That's just an assessment?
It's just an assessment. But you're thinking all county buildings, like all, we've got a lot.
Well, we got, we got a lot of buildings.
Make sure that the quote is on.
And that's for sort of comprehensive building maintenance, management, energy efficiency. That's looking at everything a building might need to have assessed.
And then give us, give us that study so we can have a replacement plan, our repair and maintenance plan going forward, similar to what we did at AB Tech as well.
It's funny, when you do these capital plans, you know, everyone, the need is always great, everyone's need is the greatest, right? So something like this will help drive this capital process as well, we can kind of see like what, where we're going to be at. And that was 45 cents per square foot was what we were quoting, that's the high end, so.
How much?
45 cents a square foot.
And looking further down on that list, would the detention facility needs assessment be different than that process? Because it would also sort of be looking at.
Detention specific.
Specific, so it wouldn't just be looking at sort of the physical state of the building, it would be looking at the broader set of questions.
And we had a very large number plugged in there, obviously, because that's what it's going to be. And when we were drafting this with Jim and Mr. Wood at the time, we decided that this needs assessment, that's definitely need to take place before we even thought about it. Right, so.
And that's a process that would sort of map out every rate, every possible way we could move forward in thinking about detention in the county. Is that?
That's what our ask is going to be. There's a way that we can maximize what we have. But this was, the first target that we had was just maintaining the facility. We want to broaden that RFP when we put it out to see what we can get as well, space as well.
I will point out Elections Complex on the top there, we have a $350,000 also plugged in there for a facility needs assessment. Only for the fact that it was requested from the Elections folks that they, it was like a 3.5 million dollar. They came and say, hey, they said, hey, we need a building, we are scattered all across the organization, et cetera, et cetera. In our discussions and deliberations, you know, perhaps there was a place where we could put a building, we could put more folks in the building with Elections. That's plugged in right now, I can provide more information on that if you need it. Just, just note that we do have the Elections Complex Facility Needs Assessment, the county buildings and the Detention Center Facility Needs Assessment, so.
So that's to, that's to study other possible places to locate it?
It would be to, or. Architect fees, yeah, architect fees.
On the existing buildings?
Honestly, the 350 might be.
That's the study.
Might be, yeah.
So, so in the conversation, it was our discussion around Board of Elections brought a lot of needs. We are scattered between the storage and then the actual availability of training space, what that looked like. And then the conversation was, do we have any other opportunity in terms of other spaces, other locations that it, that it may make sense for co-location of other departments? So they came forward with an ask for new, basically a new building. But we wanted to, to holistically evaluate.
But you're asking yourself, why is it 350,000 dollars when 2 million square feet is 900,000 dollars? We don't know what this will be, it's in there as a plug, original ask is 3.5 million dollars to just build a building. Yeah.
Well, they got the, the one building that we did have now is the old gym down Cox where the veteran's store area now.
Yeah, see, she's scattered all over the place and then she has training all over.
Well, they were over at the Ford Store on Gilmore Avenue, we used that for a while. But the buildings are in now, we've got to figure out how to do something because that building does not belong to us and it's costing us a fortune. Like 8,000 dollars a month. And we're tied into a mess, so my suggestion is not just the 350,000, we've got to figure out how to get them out of that building. And that, in that process, and this went back to Ms. Green, okay? That Bunkham County were down there, our maintenance people were down there doing roofs and everything and building that building. And that they were supposed to pay us back, well, right now they're still a hundred and some thousand dollars in the hole of paying us back.
So I've looked at that contract and they have paid us back based on what the contract says. But we had a contract that said they'll pay us so much and they've done, they've done what they were supposed to do based on what we signed and what we said we would do.
Last one I saw was just 200 and some thousand dollars worth of work and they gave us 800,000 dollars.
That's all the contract asked us to pay back, they didn't ask us for the rest of it. And the contract also has a renewal period after five years. So at that five-year period, we would try to see what we can do as far as getting that out. So this comes into play with the Elections contract to get us a spaced analysis and a study so we can prepare in that five-year period when a contract comes up, we can get out.
All these studies, that's, you know, we're talking millions of dollars. And are we smarter than that to figure out that we need something that'll span the whole way?
Well, this is architect fees and not just a study, but architect fees to go ahead and look at an opportunity to move them out of the building you're talking about. We'll repent 8,000 a month, we can put that 8,000 to a facility that belongs to us that we can renovate and keep. So that's, that's the goal behind the Elections conversation.
Are you thinking about going to Cox Avenue, trying to get everything over there?
If that, if that warehouse is big enough, but that's what the space analysis needs to look at to see all the training that they need across town, the facilities for all the large storage of the election equipment. We have enough space for the election equipment and then the staff as well, so.
That's almost like we're having a, creating a government sector down there.
Correct.
Maybe some synergy there. I don't know where, but you know, if we have something over there on Cox Avenue to be able to rent, you know, make it better, renovate, whatever. Combined folks, it's not a bad place to work. That's a property.
Great, good stuff, good. Now, we haven't talked about the pontoon boat yet, so.
I, I actually got a really nice one of that.
I can't believe nobody brought this up yet.
What's funny about this pontoon boat is we currently have a pontoon boat that's kind of on the fritz. It was given to us with the thought that we can only, people can only ride it for free, right? So if we buy our own pontoon boat, we have a little revenue coming in. That's, I mean, that's legit.
Oh, I like it.
Like Julie Pontoon Boat.
This is a replacement pontoon.
But it is, it is. But you know Josh, Josh will ask for this pontoon boat every year until it happens, so just keep that in mind. There's paddle boats on the other end too that aren't in FY20.
So if, if, if you have an assessment needs, if you've got all that, I could probably. If y'all, if y'all need an assessment needs on any kind of pontoon boat, you can.
All right.
It's good to note that the soccer complex improvements, you know that we did the TDA grant of 6 million dollars. We did the federal portion of that, which is earmarked, I think the TDA grant was earmarked for turfing and licensed turfing. And then the federal portion was for greenways. This particular 155,000 dollars is earmarked for the school system there is doing something with an exit road. It'll allow us to have an emergency exit, allow them to have an entrance way into the soccer complex or the sports complex rather. And then kind of just helping with the peripheral infrastructure around the soccer complex. That really support, you know, if we're, if we're really sinking 12 million dollars into this, this place.
And we are.
We are, we are. This is just peripherals for that. Some of these amounts are small, obviously we rolled the IT stuff in in the second quarter of the fiscal year before the budget year, just to kind of get a gauge on what we're going to need. We did land at a 479,400 figure, which is currently plugged into the scenario. Most of it's pretty self-explanatory. The permits, electronic planner, new software is just to help kind of better our permitting infrastructure, software infrastructure. The detention center gel doors, they are not going to be compatible with Windows 10, so the county's still in 1998 and we're not on Windows 10 yet. Getting there, that's going to go away, that's the same with a couple of the other items on the list. And then we're trying to do some Wi-Fi initiatives at Broad, at Sports Park and at Owen Park. The library, Collection HQ is just a management software for his materials. We did net that in his operating, so the 31, 300, or the 31,000 dollars you see there is, we basically just took money we already had, used that there, so.
What's the broadband?
It's just connectivity really at the parks. They were thinking the, I'm sorry, they were thinking the sports park. They were thinking the sports park is going to be underground, so they're going to have to run some underground stuff there. So it's going to provide staff with internet and it's going to provide the citizens with internet.
It's currently down to high-speed internet.
Connectivity.
So, so you're probably picking up, probably doing charter to go in.
There were, there were a few different clothes. I think the one, we just picked one.
So let me tell you, the reason I said that is that, you know, y'all know that, you know, our church has been in a building project to get the internet and everything in the church with Wi-Fi and so, you know, 151 in Candler. And the cheapest thing that we could do was to pay 10,000 to run the line in so that charter, that was the cheapest route. Now, if we went ATT, AT&T, we were paying like four, 500 a month. It was cheaper for us to pay out the 10,000, so I'm wondering, I'm thinking that's probably what you're doing. But we need to find out because it is not cheaper to go the monthly route.
Kathy had presented a few different scenarios. I'm sure y'all got it figured out. This was the best one.
That's cap, that's a capital investment, so obviously, that's what, that's what.
Could you say again, how will that be utilized? By whom will that be utilized?
So there, there are two buildings at the, so for the sports park, there are two buildings, 28-pack and 58-pack, if that's how you say that.
I think a big part of that is it's currently, if we are taking money for services that we're providing, then we have to go through a cap, a modem over the Wi-Fi and it's very difficult to accept credit card payments and sometimes we don't have connectivity through the phone, through Verizon. So, and also from a security perspective, we don't have any way right now to monitor those facilities from a camera. And so we have, actually, we're making very large investments on those facilities and don't have any way to really monitor them from a safety perspective as well. So this will allow us to have the technology both for, for, for the operations, like for selling passes or revenue generation, credit card payments, as well as to do for monitoring for security purposes. And also, a part of the, part of, uh, sports park was to be able to offer Wi-Fi for the community, so to be able to have Wi-Fi on the park in this.
And do you know how will it extend into?
I bet it'll go to the school. I bet. I bet they'll be able to pick it up at, at the school.
Don't, don't know that from.
Outside, I mean, outside, you'll be able to pick it up outside.
Okay, thanks.
She noted the speeds, but I don't know if she noted the range. We can definitely ask her if I don't say that.
Range is easy. You can do add-ons for range. Once you get it there.
And then the other, I'm sorry. The other items are Compers is just tax assessment software that makes it more visible for public review. And Power EMS is just a policy and procedure software that we can mark up, we can do things. It was brought to us by the Sheriff's Office and then we found out it was actually a need enterprise-wide, so that reflects the enterprise-wide figure, 16.5.
So just one other question on the broadband. So obviously, we had a, you know, nice presentation from Land and Sky about the community assessment they're doing. We've done the, you know, the Sandy Most Project, which I think has been really, you know, community really values that. So I, I, I guess my question is like, have, have we looked at any other of our, our facilities where doing something similar might, you know, might make sense? I mean, the Sandy Most kind of came from then and we said, okay, let's give it a try, you know? But have we kind of more, kind of proactively looked at like, okay, this is a really important need and while it'd be great to have it in everyone's home, that's not realistic. So are there other places we can kind of make it available? So like going to McDonald's is not like the people's only choice if you don't have it in your house, you know?
So we have not looked at other locations at this point. We were going to partner with Land and Sky and wait till that survey comes back and see the greatest need. This is for county operations that can help benefit the community right now. So this is a need for operations that could also help the community in these locations. Once the study comes back from Land and Sky, we will get with them and see what is our greatest need and then see where we go from there. But we were going to use that as our path.
Sure.
What the greatest need.
And they're going to, and they're going to complete that pretty soon. So, so I, I guess I would just kind of say for myself, I'd definitely be, you know, if there are some other places out there where a little bit of investment would produce some real community value, that's something I'm certainly open to doing.
And then we can leverage.
Because I'm thinking about, you know, I mean, I know the, the Ink Intermediate School is, is there beside a sports park, you know? And I'm thinking of the, the people that their kids go to Ink Intermediate, but they live way out in Candler and they don't have the bill, they don't have Wi-Fi at home, you know? And after school, they can take their kids over to Buncombe County Sports Park and they can enjoy the outside and they can do the homework. So looking at the other, I mean, it's a really cool thing. Looking at other parks, if they're close to a school, you know, that might be a, a cool opportunity for people to be able to access internet and a cheap, a very cheap way to do it.
Well, I mean, I just, I, I wonder if we could pause and just look at whether there's a way to leverage this to actually increase access. I mean, if we're already going to be investing 130 some thousand dollars for county operational purposes solely, might we be able to invest a little bit more and, and create a wider net of access or? I don't know if the question's been looked at through that lens yet. But I'd be interested in that if we're looking at this level of investment to see what, how many people we could help along the way.
And Tim is working on broadband. Do you have anything you want to add real quick?
Yeah, we're just chiming in very quickly. So right now, we're assessing kind of need throughout the county. And when we started, just a couple of weeks ago, we had 900 survey responses. We're already up to 1,800, so it's doubled that number. It's going to tell us what we already know, which is.
That's exact.
Everyone's real tickled that we're doing an online survey about, about access to broadband.
Yes, James.
But in terms of actual, what's happening next, so we'll have the survey results and then in July, we want to do a provider meeting. And the purpose of that would be kind of like an RFP process where we bring in Charter, AT&T, whoever, show them kind of our assets, like here's our towers that you could use, here's our gaps, help us remediate these gaps, and hopefully we'll be able to negotiate a better, a better solution across the county. But still, we're going to have gaps. I don't want to send a signal that we'll ever remediate all of it because it's a private sector entity and they're going to, they're going to put infrastructure where demand is there, so, but we'll work through it.
And are these two projects envisioned as part of that?
They will be. The, the assets, you know, when we talk assets, it sounds fancy, but all we're talking about are like tall things.
Yeah.
So lights, really tall buildings and flat, clear places. So this will be a part of the discussion.
Okay, great.
Tim, and yes, I think you got to email to on the Broad River guys through. And I think the company's name is Skyrun.
Skyrun, that's right.
To be able to put, put on towers and help bring out, help cover Broad River. That's one area. I don't know what else they do, but that's, that's.
So they'll come to the provider meeting?
They will, definitely. And so what Commissioner Frye has brought up, that's called fixed wireless. And so basically, you install wireless on a large pole and then it's like Wi-Fi outdoors. So it's kind of a, a new equalizer for internet. You don't need all of the underground infrastructure. You just need.
It's like a line of sight.
Correct. Right?
Cool. All right.
So we're thinking, how are we going to pay for this stuff, right?
Here we go. Good idea.
Obviously, debt, debt financing, but with the debt financing, we, it sounds like we're going to structure it in a way where we would issue the debt at the later end of FY '20, you know, not have to make any debt payments until 2021. So as you know, we make an interest payment in December and then we do a principal and interest payment in May, June of the next following months. And then the pay-go stuff, we have identified an area of savings in the capital fund, the main county capital fund. Over the, the contingency account we have, there's a couple of other contingency accounts and then there's, we have some unbudgeted revenues that will, we could budget and essentially way worse, we budget the revenue and then we could just turn right back there and just say, hey, let's budget the expenditures as well. So that does free us up some room of that 1.6 million dollars. We, through the assessment, we found out we only need 1.3 million dollars. So that does leave, if you're looking at need versus what we have, there's still 252,000, 253,000 left.
And Jasmine, I saw myself puzzled, maybe puzzled kind of look.
Oh, sometimes I just look that way.
So at the end, at the end of fiscal year '18, these are dollars that was part of a conversation around what is it that we have available still in savings? So this is 1.6 million dollars that continues to remain available. So wanted to include this as the potential opportunity to only need to then put a million dollars into the general fund budget utilizing capital savings to help offset some of the pay-go recommendations, so.
Can I repeat back what I think you just said? So our debt service is dropping down due to that being retired of 1.6 million dollars?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Just, I didn't quite get it.
This is actual money in the bank.
Okay.
So you have 1.6 million dollars sitting in a capital savings account.
We're actually, it's budget that we have. We have, but, you know, we budgeted projects at some point in time when we returned savings on this. We don't, we're not thinking we're going to spend the whole budget for those projects. This is what that is.
But you have, you already have the offset of revenues for it.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, yeah. But we have the expenditure budget, we would just shift it around.
You would repurpose the savings dollars towards some of the other pay-go in the amount of 1.3 million dollars? Does that help?
Yep.
So in terms of debt service trends.
So, yes, Chairman, the debt is going down, thankfully. And that is, so the blue obviously is our existing debt and this is general fund debt only.
Okay, so what, what I think would be good to see is a trim for 2020 because every year, we, we would see a slide that said, okay, here's your debt, it's going to be down to nothing. And it never happened.
We keep adding to it. Every year, we keep adding to it. So this, this implies that we have our existing debt, our 2020 debt is our gray box there. And then we added on the additional debt from the rest of the stuff on the CIP. But you're right, I mean, we're going to, every year, we're going to, every other year, we're going to add debt, most likely.
Yeah, we will.
This basically shows that if we didn't issue any new debt, it would go down to zero. However, there's always going to be a project, there's always going to be something that needs to be debt funded. So therefore, that shows your capacity moving forward.
But if you take, that's better. You take this debt and then you take the article 46 debt, which that's going to go